Not a sure stop. No, I get it.
Yeah, for example, if the design of infrastructure was in there and we saw the designs of the rest of the building, we would know what is being, you know, designed, et cetera.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for that update. We definitely appreciate that. I assume we do have any other questions or comments from council? Make sure I'm respectful. Thank you. Carolyn Woganuth will invite you to the podium.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Woganuth, city resident and taxpayer. I still do not understand, especially Mr. Kittsrow, why we are talking about a developer when we are talking about this grant agreement. I refer you to a letter that you received in a packet in November, and I've spoken to this several times, and I still don't have an answer. This was an October 11, 2023, letter from the Chief Operating Officer of the Maryland Department of General Services to Mr. Andy Kittsrow. It was confirmation of funds in the FY24 budget of $4 million through a combination of Maryland Consolidated Capital Bond Loan Funds and Pago funding as outlined below. And there were two separate awards. Award one was for $3 million, and the grant was, it was described, "A grant to the mayor and city council of the city of Salisbury for infrastructure improvements in the city of Salisbury, Wycomico County." Nowhere does it say developer, lot 10, no mention of this. Award two, $1 million, same deal, miscellaneous grants, and the same wording, reference the supplemental budget. So I've done a lot of research on the internet. I've looked at actual House Bill 200 last year, and it was referenced. Nothing about lot 10, nothing about hotel, nothing about a developer. Last night, I looked up the summary of FY2024 capital budget as enacted, and there's a line item on here for $4 million, and it's to the city of Salisbury, infrastructure improvements. Now, I look at a lot of other projects on here, and all the other projects, all the other projects have a specific thing in mind that they're going to use their money for. For example, in Washington County, Hagerstown Fieldhouse, $3 million. Montgomery County, White Flint Redevelopment, $6 million. Hartford County, Havantie Grace Colored School Museum and Cultural Center, $1 million. If you wanted this to go to a developer to build a hotel, then you must have put that into the grant request, because there is a process for getting these grants. And if you go online again, Capitol, the Maryland Department of General Services, for their consolidated capital bond loans, they describe the process.
Thank you so much, Ms. Woganuth.
You submit something online, and then reply to it, and then it goes to the Board of Public Works.
Mr. Demone? Thank you. We appreciate the administration's update to us with lot 10, and we do know that sometimes when the state generously gives funds, again, it can be loose. I know there's a couple of projects that have been done in the past, the amphitheater, you know, it was a very loose term, generalized of how they gave it, but we appreciate you all for updating us on this agreement, and we look forward to the Hotel and Convention Center. Short-term rental legislation? Welcome, Mr. Boda.
Good evening, council. I, just to make sure I didn't hurt anybody's eyes this evening, I made sure I had extra color on my head for you all.
Yes.
Well, I collect hats, and I forgot to bring a hat on Saturday to Hops on the River, and I paid for it. So that's the, that's the situation we're in. So, good evening. We wanted to bring this as a pre-discussion on some legislation we will be bringing forth, and to get some input and give you some insight onto where we want to go. So, we have, in the process of the post-EnterGov debacle, we've been looking at other software for a variety of things, code enforcement, licensing, and some things. And we, we came across the company GovOS, and they offer a solution that, as a city, we have been looking at regulating short-term rentals in the past, but there was a major piece missing, which was the ability to, to efficiently identify and audit these types of, of properties. And so they have a unique solution in their, in their software that identifies active short-term rentals. It'll monitor confirmed stays, estimate sales from those confirmed stays. It also handles the registration and permitting process in this, and it also handles the payment for the registering and permitting process. So, this would not create any significant administrative burden on our office and on finance, as this would be handled within the, the software. We would also be able to audit the rental sales versus tax payments. So if you're going back year over year, and somebody has a significant payment discrepancy, we can actually go through and audit how many times they advertise, how many times it was sold, and if it matched the previous year, then you can, you can address that issue. And then it, they also assist us in creating some enabling legislation. So, we have placed this cost into the budget. What we're coming to you about is that we will, we will begin creating the legislation and ordinances to, to, to enable this. So, so a couple of things on our list is to define what a short-term rental is, set maximum stay guidelines per stay, to set short-term rental landlord and unit registration fees, which we have placed into FY25 fee schedule, set inspection requirements, and then require, you know, one of the things we, was mentioned earlier, a short-term rental liability insurance policy of at least $1 million is the goal in the legislation. The other piece of it was to, and this is looking at what other cities, a few cities in Maryland are doing, is enacting a 2% to 3% short-term rental per transaction tax. Notice, I did not say hotel tax or lodging tax, because there is already a hotel tax in Wycomico County, but Wycomico County is not taxing short-term rentals. They're not requiring that. So, but we're going to dig into that piece to see what we're allowed to do. We've spoke with Senator Caroza this morning, and we're going to partner with her and Wayne Hartman, who, again, represent a resort town, and they've been working on this issue with Ocean City and Worcester County over the past couple of years. So, we'll be working with them, their perspective. They've got some staff that have some expertise there in the General Assembly of this on what we're allowed to do. So, but we will update you in the legislative process as we get more information. Just wanted to bring this to you. If you had any questions, concerns, any thoughts, you know, I'm always open for, for suggestions and phone calls.
Absolutely. Well, we appreciate you for, we appreciate you for, for looking into another revenue source for the city that, you know, other cities around us are, are already implementing or are in the process of doing. The only question I have, which is very short, I like the, the plus 75, a little over $75,000 that we'll recoup from this, or approximately. How'd you come up with the $100,000 in revenue?
So, that is estimating, if there's a, if there's a 3% tax, it could be 2% or 3%, depending on what the state allows. It's, it's based on how many stays, compliance percentage. With the software company sent us a, an Excel spreadsheet that kind of like has all these in there, so you can play around with the numbers and stuff. So, we, you know, we estimate from their scrub, they saw about 125 rentals. Now, they didn't do a deep scrub, like there's literally 50 or more websites that people advertise short-term rentals on. So, you know, so that's where that comes in. The registration process, by our estimates from what we've looked at, will cover the cost of the software. So, the, if we did a short-term rental transaction tax, that would bring some additional revenue, which my suggestion would be to a portion of that be set aside for the zoo. That is traditionally what, that's what the Wycomico County hotel tax does. There's a percentage of that that goes to the zoo, and then another percentage goes to tourism. But I, I would suggest that if it's a, you know, we're defining a, a purpose for the revenue, and it's a community asset, and the people who do visit Salisbury in Wycomico County, a high percentage of those do visit the zoo. So.
Thank you. Councilwoman DeShield?
Mr. Boda, do you have any taxes or registration required for the Airbnbs that seem to be popping up in Salisbury?
That is, the purpose of this is because there's nothing that, you know, we have our rental registration.
Right.
But the combination Airbnb's, what we found is there's two. There's people who do, when they're out of town, or some people who, we always call them the snowbirds that go to Florida in the wintertime. There are people who do rent their, make their property available for Airbnb in the wintertime, or other times they're not in town. The other is, we have noticed that there are people who are, own properties that are not their primary residence.
Right.
And are, this is all they do with them.
Mm-hmm.
So, so that's kind of like the, the two pieces that we see with them. And so then it's defining, you know, that, that's the piece that we're looking into. Different, different towns, different counties are doing different things. Everybody has a different definition for what a short-term rental is. And so, but we're going to try to find, there's good things, and a lot of them I see, but we'll try to find the best solution for Salisbury.
I was just amazed when I Googled it for our area, how many popped up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from, good?
So, yeah, so, okay, so basically, I'm just looking for consensus from the council to give us, go ahead and continue on the path.
Thank you.
Yes.
Words out of our mouth. Do we have consensus from council to move forward?
Yes.
We look forward to that. And thank you, again, for looking into this. Great. All right. So, seeing that, we'll move on to our administration and council comments. We'll start with administration.
No, I think we had a wonderful event this past weekend, kind of breaking in our Unity Square. Saw Mura getting a suntan out there. It's wonderful. It was, it was a really cool event, kind of going from the, the games park through our space at headquarters to Unity Square. It's kind of this newly imagined event space with all three of those areas, and the weather was great. So, I think it was just a really cool opportunity to use that space. Looking forward to using it again upcoming third Friday this weekend. And then we will officially have a ribbon cutting once everything is working. The fountain's working and everything like that. So, coming soon.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, I want to echo the, yeah, the Hops on the River was great. They installed the Hands Sculpture Day, which was cool. You and I got a chance to get a photo, which was kind of cool. Meet the Mayor went really well last week, and I hope to do another one soon. Probably going to do those monthly. So, yeah, a lot of good information, good exchanges with folks, one of which was with Holly, of course, on the Safari deal. But, yeah, it was really good, really informative, and I felt like people had a chance to really, you know, express their view without restriction and, and have an even-handed conversation. I appreciate the chief showing up and his folks, and answered a lot of, you know, simple, you know, crime issues and data-driven stuff. So, I hope to do more of them. So, thanks.
Good. And, yeah, thank you for having us. I know the community appreciates that. We'll go, we'll start with Councilwoman DeShield, actually.
Okay. First of all, I would request, if I may, from our president, if we could maybe put updates on either the work session meetings or the regular meetings, so that when people have expressed, come forward and had questions, that updates, whether it's about the scooters, or if it's about the shopping carts, or the update with the trash vehicles, which that was so enlightening, and when everybody was informed, it brings a lot of anxiety down, where I've brought this question before you, and where did it go? So, just giving updates on that. I had somebody tell me, thank you to Mayor Taylor for addressing the flooding issue over on 13. I think an update on the flooding issue on Fitzwater Street would be helpful as well. Anyway, so that's just a thought I'm throwing out there. I do say, with a bittersweet, I want to thank, it's a double-edged sword here. I want to thank the community that supported Hands and Hearts Ending Homelessness, which was a five-month shelter for homeless men in our area. They were fed every night. They had breakfast and lunches, thanks to the wonderful contributions from the community. I have been involved with that project for many, many years. On an uncomfortable, sad note, it broke my heart to have 10, 10 of our men being put back in the woods, when I know Anne Street Village has never been filled. And that's not affront to anyone, Mura, or anyone else. I know there are conditions, but it is upsetting for me personally. And I am looking forward to, I'm sorry Lynn Bratton isn't here, I'm looking forward to the community players show this Friday night.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeShield. And I actually had the clerk's office kind of in their notes and, and back to myself to share if there's any, we started that, I think, last meeting, but any action items to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable. And, and, you know, we're all individually one person, but we have the public holding us accountable. So, I had them take a deep dive into those action items, and make sure that we're following up with people. And if administration would like, we can share that with your office, make sure that if it pertains to your office, I'm sure the clerk's office wouldn't mind sharing those with you all, just if you, and whatever you do with them, that is your purview, but we'll, we'll share it up with you. Perfect. Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
It's so glad to see everyone here today and expressing their concerns. I went to this City Parks and Rec meeting, had a good time, and I, I kind of gravitated to a lot of things. And we spoke about a lot of important things there, and it was one specific thing was upgrading the lighting in the city park. They wanted to put it on the CIP. And I told them that I would recommend that, and I would talk to the mayor and to Andy in reference to that and the whole council. We also have Flag Football League, and they play, and Officer Hitty is one of the, I guess he's the coach, or he's the one who actually instrumental in getting this together. And they're playing at the Waterside Park, I do know that, and some of the games will be at the Billie Jean Jackson Park. I'm not for sure if any other games will be anywhere else. Doverdale? Okay, the Wycomico Stadium, okay. And there's grant funding for Doverdale, which is program Open Space. The Lake Street, we can, we spoke about Lake Street Playground Basketball Course being resurfaced, rims and new nets, haven't been done for a while. The tennis courts at the city park need resurfacing. And I do want to get this out. We have a, a person from Field Ops Park and Rec, George Conway, who will be retiring after his 20th year. He'll be retiring, actually, on April the 26th, which is his last day, but May the 1st will be his retirement day. And I wanted to say that tonight, because I know I'll probably forget it next week. So, I want to thank him for his services to our city. I can remember when he first started working for the city of Salisbury. So, congratulations, George Conway, on your retirement, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. Okay? We will also have, we talked about a lot of things at this Park and Rec meeting. I love Salisbury planting trees. They want to plant trees at the Monument Park, Chipmunk Cultural, Balance Playground, actually. Waterside Park will get flowers. Tru Street will get flowers. Doverdale will get trees, and the West City Park will also get trees. We also spoke about the mural on Route 13 and Church, Miraboda. They wanted to know if we could get someone out there to re-orchestrate the greenery that's out there, and make it look kind of like appealing to people, because, yeah, right now it is weed, so they just wanted to know that. And like I said, they, the recommendation for the upgrading of the light is with public safety and for the habitat that are in the park. Chief Monshine, they asked, it was a lot, but I documented it, that we have officers patrol the parks. And I explained to them, we're not fully staffed, but I'm quite sure Chief Monshine would do the best he can with that. Another thing, parks rules and, and the ordinances. Now, I do remember, and Andy know that he and I worked together for the county. We have no guidelines for parks and playgrounds. We have no activities in our parks and playgrounds, because actually the county did all our programming for years. So, now that the county has stepped away from it, we were wondering, what are we going to do about programming for our parks for the summers? So, that was one thing, and I asked them, I told them, I will speak to James Simmons to get some park guidelines, and I know that you should know some guidelines, because you were my boss. He was my boss with the city. So, they also spoke about having Leslie Wright, who was on my father's track team when we were young, he has now, he had a track team some years ago. So, they want to get that track team back together and involve all the parks and playgrounds in it, and come together, the all-comers, track team. And they used to have it at Salisbury Middle and at the Y High Stadium. And we recommended that we get that back together again, and start doing that, and start playing softball, each playground, one of the bigger parks like Doverdale, Lake Street, Indian Village, which is in the county, but we all came together and participated in things. So, we want to get the kids back together for the summers. I know it probably won't be this summer, but we're working on things to, to get our kids instrumental in being outside and exercising and doing some things constructive. And that is my report from the Parks and Rec. I don't think I need to say anything else. I thank everyone for coming again.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Gregory?
Yeah, so, a couple things. The SU group, the Otter Falls, they were out in Monument Park across the street from my house this, this weekend. As a matter of fact, I texted my driver, and I said, I said, who's, you know, who's out in, who's out in my park across the street? And he let me know what was going on, and it was really exciting to see all these college students out there planting trees, which were sore, are sorely needed. Over the years, we've lost a few of the, the larger trees. We lost a giant, beautiful cherry tree a few years ago in that park, along with a couple of others. So, it's nice to see newer trees getting planted and replaced. I want to put a plug in for the Zoo Stampede and 5K run walk over at the zoo this weekend for Earth Day, and they're also having an Earth Day celebration. The Zoo Stampede starts at 9:00, and then the Earth Day celebration starts at 10:00 a.m. And so, you know, make, make your way over to the park. There's a lot of good stuff going on this, this weekend for Earth Day. I would like to know when we're going to be seeing the CIP, because we have not seen that yet. Normally, we see it in February, and it, we've got budget coming up very, very quickly. And I would like to know when we're going to be able to see that, because that takes a lot of, that's a lot of information to take in and to go through. So, I know that you guys have been working diligently on it and just wrapped up. I would like to know, you know, when we're going to be able to get that. I also attended, now, it's not an official committee for the city, but I attended the, the LHIC meeting, which is a group of organizations and partners who are working together to improve the health in our community. There was a really, really great presentation at that meeting. It was the Health Equity Framework presentation and prior, prioritization put together by one of the interns at the Health Department, and it was just an amazing amount of information. So, I've asked for a copy of that, so we can get that disseminated out into the public, because there's a lot of really good things that we could be doing to improve health outcomes in our community. And that is it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. And Council Vice President?
A good evening. What a productive meeting this evening, I have to say. I am glad to see that the mayor did hold and host a very, it seemed very productive meet and greet. That was, it seemed like it was fantastic. I hope you felt, felt it was. Good, good, good. It was really nice. I'm sure there'll be more, and that'll be a really good thing, because I think people really want to talk to you directly. You know, they want to get to know the city on, on that personal level, and I think it was fantastic. A couple comments, I want to come around the loop about it, and maybe the next work session. I did hear back from Salisbury University in regards to Shoemaker Pond, but I'm hearing some, like, maybe some different narrative about how they proceed with the pond. But I do have this group at SU ready to do research on the pond, and so maybe we can have a broader discussion at the next work session about it. And I do, I've already sent Mary an email about a field trip this weekend in regards to going to Spring Chase. I want to take a picture of every lamppost. I do, because we had an issue in my development with lampposts. Every lamppost, every light, and Edgewater in the beginning, and that, the Edgewater is a city street. In the beginning, it takes up my full Honda RV. It takes, I mean, it would swallow it if I don't go into the other lane and around it. So, but I do want to follow up with that for sure, for sure. And, and legal to follow up on the Safari at the Quarry. I just feel very strongly about that. I understand that some of the Palio may run under Route 13 or whatever. They have particular barriers. As far as I'm aware, there's no barriers out at the Safari at the Quarry place. The last thing, of course, if you are healthy enough, please donate blood and, think about being an organ donor, plasma. I have been a benefactor of some of that. In the last couple of weeks, I've had some significant surgery on my eyes, and had to use certain combination of blood, plasma, and bone marrow up here in my facial area. And, boy, am I grateful. And can I ever be thankful for the people who've donated that. I, I just don't even know how to express those, express that gratitude. That's it.
Thank you. I appreciate all of my fellow council members for detailing some of the things that have happened in our community, which is great, because it leaves me not, not too much to speak about. But I want to echo that I had a great time this Saturday at Hops on the River. I spent some time out there. I did not get sunburned like my fellow municipal colleague there, but I did have a good time. It was good to see people enjoying themselves, and I cannot wait. I'm glad we had a very warm day, even though I hear rain outside. I cannot wait for the weather to finally break, and we get people outside and enjoying the weather and all the events that's coming. Just a few updates. I forgot to mention that at my last planning and zoning, that one, you know, there's a couple of things that were approved and things, but one cool thing is that we're, we're getting a Chick-fil-A on the south end of town. So, do you know that? I don't know how I forgot that. I don't know how, you know, that, that wasn't.
How dare you!
Yes, so, yes, exactly. So, I'm excited about that, and I know the, the public would be as well. I guess I should have started with that. I mean, you guys would have been excited there, yeah. I want to thank Field Ops as well, you know, Field Ops team for, I, I, there was a concern from a resident about actually a broken light at Doverdale Park. They, they, they had the concern, they saw it, and within days, I want to say two or three days, that light was fixed. Again, at the Doverdale Park, again, a lot of people frequent that one, make sure for the safety concerns, and that resident brought that out. And then it spearheaded into a conversation. Actually, that resident wants to start a Neighborhood Watch, and I spoke to the chief. So, again, it's up to us, and I love having conversations with community members. So, I pass that information along. I also spent Saturday morning with some members of the SU United Way team, and I'm a part of the United Way Emerging Leaders. We were down in Chrisfield, not Salisbury, but Chesapeake Housing Mission, which provides ramps to a lot of different residents, and it was great to see the community doing something great. I did some manual labor, believe it or not, and I had my work boots on, but it was really great. But also, made some connections with those SU students, figuring out, you know, what keeps them there, what's important to them. And I actually got some interest in becoming interns for council, and had one already apply. So, again, these connections that we're making and us having the conversation. So, definitely, you know, appreciate that. Kudos to the Police Department. There was a community concern. I, I spoke to, you know, the Command the command staff, and, and you all acted very quickly in that, and the persons at that affected site and location felt very assured and reassured for the swift work that you all did and the presence that, that came thereafter, so thank you to you all as well. And with that, this, this work session is now adjourned, and at this point, we'll, I'll call our special meeting to order. It is now 6:50. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt?
Yeah. I got it, you're all.
To adopt this, thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Blake, for that swift motion in a second. Can I get a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2862 for first reading?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll bring Ms. Ryan up to the podium. You aren't ready to go, are you?
I enjoy the seats.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2862, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to approve a budget amendment of the grant fund budget to appropriate funds received from Wycomico County, whereas Wycomico County has made authorized disbursements to the city of Salisbury Police Department, SPD, in the amount of $214,001, or $214,189.35. And whereas the funding source of this authorized disbursement was the result of the dissolution of the multi-jurisdictional Wycomico County Narcotics Task Force, of which SPD was a part thereof, and whereas all member agencies of the dissolved Wycomico County Narcotics Task Force received an equitable share of assets called equitable sharing funds associated with the dissolution, and whereas the equitable sharing funds are to be deposited and to be used in accordance with the guidelines set forth by the Department of Justice and U.S. Treasury, and whereas the SPD desires to use the equitable sharing funds to purchase and customize or outfit for SPD vehicles with proper police equipment, and whereas SPD will apply any remaining funds towards future vehicle purchases and/or vehicle maintenance, whereas the enhanced vehicles will be used in criminal investigations, patrol operations, and SPD recruitment efforts, and whereas the enhancement of SPD vehicles also improves response times, communications by and between officers, and the overall efficiency of SPD, and whereas Section 729 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into an agreement that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city of Salisbury, and whereas appropriations necessary to exclude the purpose of this funding must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget being hereby amended as follows. A, increased grant fund DOJ revenue account number 10500423101 by $214,189.35. An increased grant fund expense vehicle account number 10500577025 by $214,189.35. The remainder is the standard sections.
Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance number 2862 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Can I motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2863 for first reading?
Second.
Ordinance 2863, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget and authorizing the mayor to amend the authorized positions included in the FY 24 general fund budget, whereas during the course of the past few months, the city executives have been assessing and formulating position and grade changes that will benefit, that will be of benefit to the city, and whereas the city of Salisbury has determined the need to reorganize seven, or several positions and revise the authorized position counts in the Department of Infrastructure and Development, and whereas the city of Salisbury has determined that there is a need to change pay grades assigned to several positions, and whereas the city of Salisbury has determined that no additional funding is required to make the update, and whereas to effectuate these changes, the positions, the position appropriations set forth below must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the city of Salisbury FY 24 authorized position budget being hereby is amended as follows, the details of which are spelled out in the chart that is in your materials. Section 2 through 5 is our standard sections.
Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance number 2863 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. And at this time, this special meeting is now adjourned.